Okay, here we go. Bring this regular city council meeting to order at six oh four.
Father, thank you for this evening and thank you for the leaders that you've blessed our city with. I pray that you would continue to grant us wisdom and discernment as seats to lead the city of Hondo in the best direction possible. Lord, I thank you for the leaders and the way that they've served our community faithfully. Continue to be with them as they make decisions. Thank you for our school leaders that have had to make some tough decisions, Lord, continue to be with them as well. We want to lift up those who are ill, those who are sick, those who are struggling today. Lord, would you bring about healing in the ways that only you can do? Lord, we love you and thank you for what you have done. We thank you for the future, for what we know that you will do. Pray this in Jesus's name, amen.
Standing will place the leaders' flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a quorum tonight. We have one councilman that is out here but on the, on the system here. Move to item four, which is citizens' comments. We have a couple that have signed up. Do we have any email comment? First, we have Erin Highsmith, two oh two East Eighteenth Street. Highsmith, if you'll state your name and address and you have three minutes as far as your comments concerned.
My name is Erin Highsmith and I live at two oh two East Eighteenth Street, lot fifteen. I've come here today as a concerned citizen. My mom grew up here and told us that was, Hondo was great and a wonderful place to live. And we, me and my siblings believed her. We came here to Hondo thinking we would have a new and improved life, but we were wrong. I have joined the Fair Board Association thinking that I could get more and more into the city. And we recently had a meeting with your manager, the city manager. And when we had our, sorry, I'm nervous. When we had our meeting, he was very inappropriate and made me realize I didn't want to raise my kids here. He first started out as trying to make a proposal for us to collide together and be one. But when we asked him a simple question, he threw a tantrum and it was very inappropriate for a man to throw a tantrum. I myself am very upset at this community and how it is becoming and it is not feeling like home. I grew up with the quote, "You have to give respect to get it." And the lack of respect he gave us at the meeting made me lose all respect for him. I believe he owes all of us an apology and needs to be replaced with someone else who will respect this community. I also believe that mayor owes the Fair Board Association an apology for the lies he had put in the newspaper print about them saying they cannot pay their bills because I know for a fact that that is not true. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms.
Teresa Chapman.
My name is Teresa Chapman. I live at two zero two East Eighteenth Street, lot fifteen. As a member of the community of Hondo and a member of the fair association, I come here today pretty upset. I grew up in Hondo, loved it so much, I moved my family here, as you heard from my daughter. I figured this was a great place to raise my kids. I've always called it home. Recently, the fairgrounds were taken from the fair association. Our contract said the city was to sit down and negotiate with us, yet the city refused. We had to hire an attorney just to get someone to sit down and talk to us. The city had Jamie Kindred, Sharon Garcia, who is HR, and the city manager, Scott Albert. Not one member of council attended, nor did the city attorney. The meeting started peaceful. Mr. Albert was proposing some kind of partnership. If that was the case, we would lose a lot of our sponsors. We were only going to be allowed two weeks a year to put on the fair, as well as any fundraisers. We were previously able to use it and we didn't profit from it. None of the money came to us. It went to all the kids in the community for scholarships. We asked him if the city was going to buy the tables and chairs from us. It apparently struck a nerve with him. He said, "That's it, I'm done, inventory everything and get it out," then stormed out of the meeting. The fact that a grown man, more so one who manages and represents the city, would act like that is very concerning and disheartening. I did send an email to you, Mr. Daner, letting him know about the situation with Mr. Albert. You apparently sent it to all the council members and the only one of council to respond to me was Mr. Villa. The mayor, the mayor's only questions were, was livestock there and who was there from the fair board? Nothing else was said. I can't fathom why Mr. Albert would have been hired and given a contract without a review. Every other employee has to go through a review. I don't know why you wouldn't do a background check or at least some research. I hope that you're aware that he was fired from his last city job. And do you know, we also have a councilman who's not a resident of Hondo? He lives in Quehever, therefore he's not a Hondo resident. I don't know what's going on in our city, but it's turning into a chaotic wreck. I'm quickly losing faith in a city I was once dying to move back to. How do we remedy this?
Thank you, Ms. Chapman. Moving to item five, discussing, consider approving the minutes from the regular city council meeting of August twenty-third. These were delivered, you believe, on Friday. Do we have any additions or corrections of those minutes? If not, do we have a motion to approve, Mr. President?
Don't move.
You have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries?
Aye, sir.
Thank you, sir. Item number six, city manager reports.
Good evening, mayor and council. This evening I have three updates I want to provide you. The first one would be regarding the COVID-19 update. As of September thirteenth, there are two hundred fifty-seven active cases in Medina County, which is down from the previous report at three hundred and four. And as of September sixth, the county has four thousand four hundred thirty-three confirmed cases. COVID-19 vaccines are available at the Medina County Health Unit Monday through Thursday from seven thirty a.m. to eleven thirty a.m. and then from one thirty p.m. to five thirty p.m. on those days. You can register for the vaccine on the county's website or call the county health unit at eight three zero seven four one six one nine one. And walk-ins, walk-ins are also welcome. The county is also still waiting on guidance for the booster doses. And as information comes available, the county will inform the public. The other item I want to bring to your attention.
Will you repeat what the four thousand cases were? Was that in?
Confirmed cases, sir.
Since the beginning.
As of September sixth. In the county. In the county.
That's what I thought I heard.
Yes.
And what was the update count, two sixty-seven?
Two fifty-seven, sir.
Before he goes further into the reports, mayor, can I ask a question or?
Let me go COVID. That actually is up a little over last week and I think we had seven additional deaths this week in the county.
Two of them in Hondo.
Sir?
Two of them in Hondo, the same week.
Let him finish with his report for you. Your next item, sir?
My next item was adoption of the property tax rate and budget for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. Just bringing council's attention to the public. The city council will conduct a special meeting next week on the twentieth at six p.m. to hold a public hearing on the property tax rate and consider approving the budget and property tax rate at the same time. And the last item I want to bring to your attention is to provide you an update regarding the home program grant. Notice was published on August twenty-six regarding the city accepting applications for the home program. To date, the city has received thirteen applications and Jamie is working with our grant consultant on determining the next steps for evaluating the applications. The city budget for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two includes enough funding, at least for our match, to work on at least five homes for this upcoming year. And that's one update for this evening, mayor.
I have a question. Excuse me. I forgot to ask Jamie today when I was in your facility in reference to that housing program. Is there anybody within your staff or the library, studio staff, that will be or can assist with those applications to some of the elderly?
Our grant consultant is assisting, so if an individual has any questions regarding the grant, they can call our grant consultant. If they need help in completing an application, that's something we haven't talked about, but I don't see why we couldn't work something out, whether it's Jamie or the library, sir.
Because I picked one up today and I dropped it off and that's the first question he asked.
Right, right.
So.
Our grant consultant's there to help them, but if they need help in completing the application, I'm certain we can make arrangements, sir.
If he just needs help with the application.
Right, tell him to reach out to Jamie.
Okay.
Okay.
Mayor.
Got a question?
Yeah. We discussed this on, at the last council meeting about the mask mandate in, in the city facilities. What has since then, what has been done or has anything been done about that? I still feel that. I know there's a lot of people out there that don't like it, but I still feel like we should mandate mask wearing when people come into the city of Hondo facilities, whether it be the library, the recreation center, city hall. And what I've read in, in the minutes from last week is that we're gonna let management decide whether to wear masks or not to wear masks when they walk into the facility.
And the other guidelines we had before.
So what's been done?
You're asking city manager.
Yeah.
Okay. The mask mandate is an issue that council will have to take up because obviously you're going to be going against a governor's order. So legislatively, that's something you're gonna have to consider. That's something I cannot.
That's not true.
Well.
It's an issue to the management of the city as to in their, in our own facilities, whether they require masks and whether they require the testing and that kind of thing.
Well, I guess what I would have to do, sir, is then, you know, ask council for authorization because obviously we're going against a governor's order as far as the mask mandate. I don't think that's my, my position to do this.
I read that order out loud in last, last meeting and it, and it's, it does prohibit the city from doing that. From, and, and I mean, I know people, I know some people are doing that, but it's still illegal.
Yeah.
So, so yeah, I don't think that that decision would need to be made by him. It would be, it would need to be made by us and I would vote against it because it's illegal.
Didn't you have COVID?
I did.
Thank you.
That's a personal question, though. Probably not a personal.
It's viable, I hear. But in, in that order from the governor, which I read too, nothing says there that we can't post a sign and say, "Wear a mask if you want." A mask is highly encouraged.
I, I, I would agree with that.
You know what I mean?
About, that's not what councilman D. was saying, but I, I would, I would say that's, that's probably a good idea. If you, if you are comfortable wearing a mask, go ahead.
I think, I, I think that if you put the sign out to encourage a mask wearing, more often than not, we have a lot of smart citizens here in Hondo, Texas. They'll put it on if you're looking for one.
I'm, 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 I'm gonna say a comment here. At the restaurant, I have a mask recommended before entering. And I sit there and look at the door all day long and people read that sign and they go back to their cars and get their mask. So why couldn't we do that at the?
Let me ask.
We can.
Look is a question. I know the hospital here requires masks in all their facilities. What's the difference between us and the hospital?
There isn't.
It's a private business.
There were also certain exceptions, mayor, to the governor's order. On certain facilities were exempted from the ban on mask mandates. Certain hospitals and the like were exempted. I'd have to go back and look at the order, but I believe some were exempted. The order also does not extend to other social distancing and other kinds of procedural things. They just, just kind of require the masks specifically, that's prohibited. But other measures that the city previously took, they could, regarding social distancing and operating hours and living numbers and things like that, that the city's done in the past, those are allowed under the term.
Nothing against recommending masks?
No, sir. I would, I would agree with that.
Yeah, yeah. Can I kind of answer a question? I honestly agree with the things being made. There's, there's nothing all about the subject on, like, something that, that, you know, be worn, but we can't afford anybody to do that. I, I probably agree with that.
Okay. We'll put up signs tomorrow?
Any other questions, city manager?
On city, on the reporting, yes. I asked about the mosquito spread, I don't know, two or three meetings ago and I would like an update on that. If anything has been, I haven't seen a mosquito truck go by anywhere, so are we looking into it? Have you done anything about it?
Sir, what we can do is, because it's not on the agenda this evening, we will put that on the next agenda for next week because we're meeting on the twentieth. I think we'll provide you an update.
Okay. Here we go again. We'll put it on the agenda for next week. Can I? I was, I, I asked the mayor to put a certain item on the agenda for tonight's meeting. And apparently it wasn't, it wasn't put on. I recommended to the mayor, the mayor sent an email to the city secretary. Then the city secretary apologized to the mayor because it wasn't put on. Who makes this decision to, whether to put it on there or not?
The final draft agenda, or final agenda that I sent to the city secretary did not include the specific item the mayor had requested. Because he sent the request to the city secretary and I wasn't aware of that. So when I was streamlining the agenda as far as items I wanted on there specifically, I took two or three items off. That was one that I took off because no one specifically requested it.
Okay.
That I was aware of.
If me or any other councilman requests an item to put, be put on the agenda, do we go to the city secretary? Do we go to you? Who do we go with?
You can go to either one of us. I knew, I knew.
The mayor went to the city secretary.
That's correct.
And it wasn't put on the agenda.
That's correct. It was, I didn't know that there was a request. The items that you did send, as far as the other two or three items that are on the agenda this evening are on there.
I know.
Because I received.
I'm not questioning that. I'm questioning the certain item that I requested to be put on the agenda and who's blaming who here?
We're not blaming anybody.
Well, why wasn't it put on the agenda?
Because I was not aware that she had, wanted it on, or the mayor wanted it on the agenda. And so when I sent, when I sent the final agenda back.
A week before the agenda was written, the mayor requested through email to the city secretary for that item to be put on the agenda. Not for next week's agenda.
Right.
For this week's.
Right. Well, that very item, I mean, I apologize that it was an oversight. There was nothing intentional here, sir. It's something that we can obviously put on next week's agenda because it's an issue that, whether you address it tonight or whether you address it next week, it's not gonna make a difference.
Also.
Well, yeah, it'll make a difference because we gotta wait two weeks for the answer, what we're gonna do with that specific item.
No, it's next week, sir, on the twentieth. One week.
And just to correct you, it wasn't until Thursday or Friday that I asked her to put it on the agenda. Not ten days ago. Thursday or Friday, I think maybe.
Well, mayor, the, the thing is, whether it was a week ago or two days ago, whatever it was, if we request something to be put on the agenda, it should be put on the agenda.
I, I, I don't disagree with the councilman. It was just an oversight and it's an issue that we can still address.
Two people oversaw that?
I wasn't aware of it, Johnny.
It was on the draft agenda.
It was on the draft because I put it on there originally. And then when I went back to start streamlining the agenda, I start taking things off depending upon what, and I took it off not knowing. I'm gonna take, if the mayor had sent in and I had known it, I wouldn't have taken it off. I guarantee you.
Well, why are you taking it off?
Because again, I'm streamlining the agenda based upon the items that are on there for this evening.
Well, it's, it's a dead issue now, but if we can get on the agenda for next Monday, even though it doesn't give us much time to, to work on anyway.
Well, mayor, my thing is that when we request something, we expect it to be done. Whether it's Councilman Itoarte or Williams or Heiser, whomever it is, you know.
And I remind you, text two councilmen, put an item on the agenda.
So what's, what's, what's the process for putting it on the agenda? We need to email you?
Email or city secretary. What, and again, I think we need to all remember, our city secretary's new, so we're, we need to coordinate. Sue Ann and I will coordinate better on, on the next agenda. It was just an oversight.
Well, that's an important thing.
Right.
When she first came on board.
Right.
That needs to be discussed with her about our city agendas for our city council meetings.
So two, two people need to email you with the same agenda item if they want it to be on the agenda?
That's right.
That's the best way to.
Right, right.
Okay.
Yeah, but if the mayor requests, requests something.
You want a council?
No, myself can put on one.
Oh, you can?
That's why I asked.
With two, with two.
With the councilman, it's two.
With two, right.
That's why I asked the mayor to put it on the agenda because the mayor has the authority instead of two council people. The other items on the agenda, Councilman Itoarte and myself requested them to be put on the agenda and they are on the agenda.
Let's move on.
Can we make note that we want the American Rescue Fund on the agenda for next week's meeting?
Yes, sir.
I want it.
You sure?
Yes. Okay.
Public Works Report.
Thank you, Scott. Evening, mayor, council. Quick update on the streets activities primarily. Since the last meeting, they have completed forty work orders. They have ten pending as primary and eleven as secondary currently for different reasons. They've also had several special projects they were working on, such as the fair hall closing in the area that was opened up for the septic problem. They paved about six hundred feet, six hundred square feet of asphalt there that's not in the numbers you're about to hear. For the past period, they worked forty work orders, six hundred and sixty potholes. They've been very busy and it's making a difference. You can see it when you go around town, certainly feel it. And to go back to the time period before that, to the last council meeting prior, they worked four hundred and eighty-three, so.
Are you gonna have any kind of report that goes to the council on that written report?
I, I can, yes, sir.
Any questions?
Yes, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
I wanna, we talked about this before summertime and here the summer's almost over. What has been done or what? Where are we at? We have half a million dollars worth of equipment sitting somewhere at a yard for street repairs and, and I don't see any streets being repaired with that equipment that we purchased two years ago. Can you give me an update of what, what's going on with that? Because I know there's a lot of streets that can be, just like y'all did on Seventeenth Street between Avenue P and Avenue R or Q. You know, there's a lot of streets that could be fixed that way and our equipment is just sitting somewhere. Is anybody looking into that or what streets can be repaired?
Yes, sir. We'll be embarking on the, the project that y'all approved at the last council meeting as far as prioritizing our short-term street repairs. The equipment that you're speaking of, as you know, I'm getting up to speed on some of the streets issues. That's a piece of equipment I'm not too familiar with, but I do know that one of the hindrances that we have is it's very difficult for us to properly work with hot mix right now, which is a much better solution than cold mix. In the twenty-two budget, there is a request for a four-ton hot mix unit that'll allow us to keep hot mix hot so that we can make better repairs and hit it once and then move on to the next area. They've been in a mode of trying to get caught up with all the pothole repairs and then they'll get into the training on all the equipment we have to make sure we're utilizing everything.
I know, I know that you weren't the public works director back in the wintertime when we talked about it and we talked about this equipment that's in somewhere. And we were told that we needed to wait till the summer. Well, summer's almost over and nothing's been done. That's why I'm asking, somebody needs to get on board and find out what we're gonna do because we have half a million dollars worth of machinery over there that's not being utilized.
Yes. What I'd like to do, if you're comfortable with it, I'd like to bring you a full update on that piece of equipment. I've heard it mentioned a number of times and I'd like to get more familiar with it, know exactly what the limitations and, and challenges are with that.
There were several pieces of equipment.
Yes, I'd be happy to bring you an update on that.
First, there was a training, then they were trained and nothing's being done.
Well, they're, they're not utilizing that equipment, but they are working very hard to get the streets back in service.
I understand that, David, but the thing is, we bought that equipment over two years ago so we could get streets repaired. And we've had, out of the whole city, they, they practiced somewhere out at their airbase with this equipment. And besides that, all they've done is two blocks of Seventeenth Street in, in over two years.
I'll need to research that for you and bring you a proper answer.
Thank you.
I have a question. What is Fourteenth Street supposed to be completed again?
The contract goes through February. We're working on some process changes currently that should accelerate that. I, I'd be leery to give you an exact date because it is contingent on weather, but they are proceeding with some processing of the U Street area so that they can do the entire paving at once rather than have to do part of it and then come back again. So they are, they are consciously trying to accelerate that timeframe.
Okay. I was thinking it was a different date, but you clarified that, so thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hey, David, along with that report that the mayor requested, I would like to, just the one time, can you give us a breakdown of that equipment just so we can get it, so some of us can get a clearer picture?
Absolutely.
And they've been discussing that since I came on board since.
I agree.
More than November.
I agree. I want to know more about it, too. We'll bring you a complete answer.
On, on Fourteenth Street, it looks like the county's getting pretty close to being able to open that annex building.
Right.
It doesn't sound like we're gonna be ready on Fourteenth Street when they're ready to open the annex. Is that right?
Correct. The front, as I heard, they were planning to open this, this, this Friday, but I don't think they're gonna make that particular time.
They're planning to open August the twenty-seventh and here it is, you know.
Yeah, I think initially they'll probably focus on entering through Thirteenth Street, which a lot of, of the finish work was done on that today, actually.
Okay. Any other questions?
David, can you look, um, and see if there, I vaguely remember that there were some, uh, training videos obtained for the street department to use that equipment. I, I could probably go back in my notes and look, probably back in November, where there were some videos bought. It, it just came up. The same issue came up right after me and Wes came on. That's when we first heard of that equipment. Correct me anytime if I'm wrong. And that came up, that, that it was, yes, it was confirmed, there was videos with that equipment. So if they have those videos and they come back to you and tell you, David, well, we're not trained. All right, so where's the videos? That, that's just to, 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 to help you because that, that response you might get. David, we weren't trained.
Right, right. No, I appreciate that and we'll, we'll get a comprehensive evaluation of what's going on because I, like you, I've heard this for a, a number of times and I'd, I'd need a solid answer myself.
The thing is, you know, it's been talked about for over a year. Before Councilman Ituarte, Heeser, or Williams came on, I, I, I've been on here and I, and I know what was said. First, it was a training, they finally got the people trained and still nothing, nothing's been done. So I, I, you know, we need, we need to get back on track so we can utilize this, this equipment that we have. And I asked before, and I think former Councilman Torres and Michelle Long, we all asked if they were already trained, what, what needs to be done now? They were, they've been trained and, and, and here it is. No, almost, we talked about it last November, we talked about it before, we're talking about it now and nothing's been done. Somebody needs to get on board on this because we spend a lot of money for this equipment to just be sitting there and not being utilized.
I completely agree. Rather than give you a partial answer, I'd like to bring you a complete one next meeting.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Item number eight, this is an item I put on the agenda because of my concern for getting the police department the equipment they need, especially lately when we've had all the, all the incidents. But item number eight is discuss and consider amending the City of Hondo two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one budget. Authorizing the purchase of police department equipment as follows. Body armor, thirty-one thousand nine sixty-five fifty-five, body cameras, forty-five thousand three hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Vehicle equipped and after trade-ins of forty-one thousand six hundred and fourteen dollars. Handhold, handheld radios, ten of them for twenty-eight thousand one hundred dollars for a total of a hundred and forty-seven oh forty-eight fifty-five, which would be the amendment. And then also included in, in the discussion is include in the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two budget for an additional police officer. That, uh, these, this is the number of items, it's the amount we're looking at. I'd like for the council to consider, uh, amending the, uh, current budget to take care of the hundred and forty-seven oh forty-eight fifty-five.
So that's the wrong budget year, correct?
First budget year is this budget year for amendment.
Oh, okay, there it is.
That'll take away the concern about going over budget in the coming budget. And then the, the additional police officer would be included in the, the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two budget.
Mayor, uh, or City Manager, uh, when would that better, uh, if, if we were to amend that for this year's budget? What does that better, uh, at the end of the year? Does that better set in a deficit or is it good?
Oh, that's the current looking at in the general fund. A year in deficit of roughly four hundred and fifty.
Thousand dollars, so this would add another one hundred thousand dollars to the deficit.
So, so the forty-five, three sixty-nine for body cameras, we already have that.
That's in, uh, upcoming budget year, yes.
Next year's budget.
But the additional police officer could replace that in next year's budget.
So are we just gonna throw out the window or discussions that we had at our, at the budget workshop out at the Paloma, Pachanga, whatever it's called now? Cause that, I remember like it was yesterday. It hits me like a brick in the forehead every time it comes up because we discussed this and we had the general consensus of this group that we were gonna get them this fiscal year. Nothing was gonna be put off. How'd that flip the side? How'd that change? How'd that get a turnover is beyond me. But the general consensus, I don't wanna frame on my stack of notes from the meetings that we have. I'm not making this up. This, uh, the general consensus of this table, this group was to get that equipment as soon as possible before the end of the fiscal year. And here with our, what do we push back? The, uh, cameras to the next budget? That was not what we discussed. That's not what we generally agreed on.
In, in that, in that meeting, we just, everybody came to the, to the, to the stage and requested a lot of different things. I'm, I'm pretty sure that every single person that came up there asked for more employees. They asked for more equipment, more machinery.
You're correct. You're correct.
So I don't, I don't think any decision was made in that, in, in that, in that, at that time, nor, nor was that a, nor was that a time.
The consensus was to.
Hold on, let me, can I, just let me finish, please.
One at a time, please.
So I think what's more important is that when the city manager solicited that, that, those budget requests from the, from the, from the chief, that these things weren't on it. So I, I, I still haven't heard, and I don't know if we can do that, but the chief, everything that he's, that he submitted, he was granted.
For the twenty-one, twenty-two budget.
For next year, for next year.
We, as a group, uh, the consensus of this at the workshop, that Mr. Torres is talking about, we were gonna purchase this equipment with twenty-twenty-one budget. We were gonna amend the budget for then. Now it's being put over here.
I, I, I don't, I don't recall.
And besides, all, all the equipment that you're talking.
To amend the budget.
I don't recall that either.
Of course.
All, all the, all the, the other stuff that you're talking about, did all the departments wanted new trucks and new this. Every single vehicle that each department requested is, is on the budget. It's on the budget for approval.
Everyone?
Every, every single truck.
I know, I know there's a piece of equipment.
Wait, wait, wait.
There's a piece of equipment.
Every single one is, is on the budget, whether it's recreation, water department, wastewater, electric, it's all on the, to be approved on the twenty-one, twenty-two budget.
Can I add something?
Yes, please.
The vehicles that are in for the coming year, we have to remember, those are gonna be funded through of no option or a lease option, whereas we're not gonna be paying that straight out of pocket. Those will be financed. So that's the reason for and the possibility of those additional asset items being purchased.
Regardless how they're gonna be purchased, financed or paid cash or whatever, they're still in the budget.
Yes, and like, like Brett stated, the two vehicles that were requested for the USDA grant for the police department are included as well.
Gentlemen, I'm not talking about the other departments, the other trucks or whatever. I'm talking about our police department.
I understand.
I'm talking about.
What he's rea- but what he was bringing up, what we talked about at, at, at the, at the.
Budget workshop.
Workshop. I know we're not talking about that.
But I'm talking about equipment that they need right now. I mean, there's been a lot of events lately that were very dangerous. They need this equipment for safety.
We even talked about Brett, that yes, there was one vehicle obtained that Judy clarified for us, but there's another one that have been sitting there at Cecil Ford Edison collecting dust. And that's what actually brought us together and the consensus was, let's get this equipment right now.
Yeah, I don't, I don't recall that at all.
Well, I, I can, I can show you.
I, I mean, I took notes, too. I mean, I, the, the, the budget workshop was for people to come with, with their ideas.
With their ideas, with their wish list.
With their wish list, right. So, so when it, when you actually get down to doing these things, they need to be highly scrutinized and justified before we spend this kind of money. And, and I, and I'm seeing, I'm seeing the, the, the desire for this stuff. Ev- everybody would agree that saying more police is great, more police equipment, more police this. But at some point, more police is not cost effective, right? So where are we at that? Where, what point are we at?
We're not asking for a phone in your police department.
All I, all I, all, well, all, all I've said, all I've heard is that Mr. Mayor and two council members want this. I haven't, I haven't heard the police, I mean, the, the chief of police say.
He's already made his presentation. You weren't here.
Yes, when?
You were on the phone, um, uh, wherever you come from, speaker. He made his presentation twice.
I mean. Twice in the last meeting?
You gotta have it, do you not make notes? He, he's, he's presented it twice, right where Julie's standing. Our chief police stood right there in the same, the same spot and he made his presentation.
What, what meeting was that at? The one I was on the phone? Last, the last meeting when I was on the phone?
Or maybe you weren't here.
I've only, I've, I've been to every council meeting.
These, these are not play toys I'm talking about. These are safety equipment, except maybe for the vehicle, but this is safety equipment.
That, that issue of the equipment has never changed. Well, it keeps changing because it is, it's getting pushed back and pushed back and pushed back.
I don't, I, I, I don't understand, I don't understand why we can't get this approved when we need the protection for the citizens of Hondo and the protection of our police department. I mean, what, what's the big deal? I mean, cause we need, if we need to adjust the budget and somehow maybe we should leave the truck out from the eh, electric department or the truck out from, there, there's plenty of vehicles sitting around that they can. We need to protect our police department and we need to protect the citizens of Hondo. And then we need this equipment, we need these vehicles, we need this extra police officer. I think that we should be able to get that for our police department.
I, I, I definitely believe in safety first. And a body armor, that's, that, I, I would assume that this body, we, we have body armor.
Yeah, but it's all worn out.
It's all worn out.
It's all worn out.
And we need cameras.
Well, cameras, cameras have already been.
And we need more radios.
Cameras have already been approved for next budget.
Well, that budget hasn't been approved. I'm talking about a lot of that.
Well, the budget, but it hasn't been approved.
So, I mean, so to answer one of your questions is, yes, this, these things are very important if the need is justified. If we've gone through the exercise to, to ensure that, 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 that they're absolutely justified, but we're, we're four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the hole already. So we have to make some tough decisions.
You don't think, okay. We can't justify equipment for our police department, but we can justify other employees for the city of Hondo that are not on the, on, on the budget? We can justify that?
Just fine.
We can justify, you can justify other positions for the city of Hondo that some of them we need, some of them, some of them we don't need, but you can justify the safety of the citizens of Hondo in our police department?
That's for the city manager and the police chief to discuss.
We're in the budget right now. That's the question.
And I, and I'm, I'm, what I'm saying is the people that aren't involved in the day-to-day are pushing these things. Things that I haven't seen requested on, on a budget request form. So I, I don't know, I mean, the cameras, the cameras.
I know, I know, I know what the problem is. The problem is that we have, since y'all came aboard, we have a split council from day one. The city manager works for three councilmen, not for five, and that's the way it is right now. And nobody checked in your head.
You can have your opinion on whatever you want, but that's not the truth.
That's my opinion and my opinion is.
That's a decision, that's an operational decision.
It's facts.
That's your opinion.
Do, do I have a motion on this action item?
So moved.
You have a second? Any further discussion?
Brett, we are, we're talking about the budget. We are in budget season.
Yes.
And this is when this body, this group, this team can talk about what we're gonna buy, what we wanna buy, what we don't wanna buy, who, what position we're gonna do away with. This is the time to do it. Not, I, I think we're through the budget. Yes, then it's him. But right now, it's us. It's us. And this equipment is important and is needed. It's needed. They, we have a motion in a second.
I have a question.
I, I would put, I, I'm running this question for.
Yes.
Uh, I would put it like that. What, uh, what items have been approved for, for budget, for police department and that? I know that we added a few more items after, so what are those items?
So we have the two police veh- yes, the two police vehicles that we do with the USDA grant each year. And then also we added the body cameras. We added it for next year.
They haven't been approved yet. They're on the budget. They have not been approved yet.
Correct. I did not get approval.
But they're on now.
I, I did not, we're on it for the budget.
That's when we reevaluated the remodeling of City Hall.
The mayor, the mayor is asking for additional and for this year's budget.
That's right.
That's correct.
And, and.
Be amended.
And to move the body cameras this year instead of next year.
Uh, that's not the way I'm, I'm hearing that.
Is it to move them or is it to include them in addition to next year's? It's my question.
I think Mayor was saying we could.
The first item to amend this year's budget to provide for that. The police officer would go to next year, but you wouldn't have the body cameras for next year. That kind of subjugates that.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
So for, the, the one that really strikes me is the body armor. So is it, in, in Chief and Scott, in your opinion, is, is the body armor that we have insufficient?
Chief can't hear very well. He's got a bad ear.
The chief would have to answer that question.
What I wanna, what, the one that concerns me that's more safety related, I mean, the, the other things are important for sure. But the body armor, is there, is, is the body armor that, that your officers currently have, is it, is it, uh, insufficient? Is it subpar? Is it?
So currently the body armor that we have, the life expectancy of body armor is about seven years. So the body armor, we try to minimize, we try to take care of the body armor as best as we can. After the seven years, the life expectancy of body armor goes down. So at this, at this, uh, current time, probably about, I would say eighty-five percent of it is to the point to where it needs to be replaced. Not only that, uh, sometimes, uh, when we do have a changeover in, in staff, the body armors are custom made for that particular officer. So every time that we either lose an officer and we get a new officer, what we try to do is we try to see if we can make that vest work for the new officer. Or most times we have to send them off to get them custom made, which is about, probably about eight, anywhere between eight to about fifteen hundred bucks apiece, depending on, on the size of the vest and the style of the vest.
Okay, thank you for that. Let me, one more question if I, if I may. What, what, for, for you, Chief, Chief, if you don't mind, I got one question for you. So our, what, what on this list, I, I, I assume that you have the agenda, the body armor, the body cameras, the vehicle, the next vehicle and the radio handhelds, what, what, what of that was on your budget request form for two, twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty?
So on my budget request form that I submitted, uh, none of this was included on there. So, uh, take into consideration that when, uh, when we went into the budget retreat, it was a wish list of what we would wish that we could have. So I understand that, uh, as, you know, I've been in, in the chief's position for about, uh, four years, been working with the budget for about four years. So I'm trying to be realistic here on, on everything that we would really need. So and if I was to have come forward and submitted everything, then we're looking at about three hundred something thousand, anywhere between two hundred to three hundred thousand. So I'm trying to be realistic here. Also, I had mentioned it, uh, that I was taking, uh, into consideration and looking at grants that would help offset some of that cost for body armor. We have the two, uh, USDA vehicles and the, uh, body cameras. There's also grants for radios. So that's, that's the reason that, uh, you know, I'm just trying to be realistic here and what I went through. So next coming budget, uh, next budget, we were planning to come in with whatever we weren't successful in this coming year and prioritize and being able to submit when we need it, so.
Okay, good. Can, do you think by looking at these, these items right here, can any of them be reevaluated, reevaluated for future, for future years? Like a program, like on body armor where you, where you don't replace everything at one time and you do, you kind of do it?
So there's, there's a couple of different programs that are actually out there now, um, that, uh, what you can do is if one body armor goes bad, depending on the size of your department, you could try to apply for them and what they would do is help offset some of that cost and maybe replace one or two out of like maybe five or six to help alleviate the cost. So what we've also done is a year ago, we've implemented a new, uh, software sheet to where we're trying to keep track of all the body armor that's been purchased, what the, what the brand is, the make, the model and the life expectancy. So what we need to do is create a different program or a different option to where we can go and attack, you know, every year, maybe come in with five or six. Currently, right now, we do get starting funding for, for vests. I believe that's, uh, I don't know if you have two vests or maybe they don't, they don't probably take care of us for like two or three vests per year, depending on the style of vest that we get. Uh, female vests are a little bit more expensive, uh, they're having to be custom made. So those, you know, it just kind of just kind of hit and miss, so.
And that can, but that can keep you from that.
From coming all at one time.
Within that seven-year cycle, too, right? So, so I, all I'm saying is in our, in our current financial situation, you know, we need to make sure that every officer in Hondo has, is protected for sure. need to make sure that every officer in Hondo has, is protected, for sure. But I think, I think there needs to be a little bit more, uh, analysis on, on some of this stuff, instead of just saying, let's go throw another hundred and fifty thousand dollars onto this already, this four hundred and fifty thousand dollar deficit we have. So, I, that's, that's, that's where I stand.
Chief, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
If you were to rank these and, and, and we were to, let's say we can include one or two of them, what, what would be your list, what would be your priority list?
So.
On these for this year's budget?
So, if we had to rank them in the top three, I would probably start off with the body armor. Body armor is gonna be probably the top priority. Uh, we would probably go down to body cameras, and the reason we're moving forward body cameras is a lot of other agencies have already probably been to that point, uh, working with our prosecuting agencies, our district attorney's office and everything, uh, higher, uh, agencies there at the point to where they're starting to require body cameras for, for, uh, just to ensure transparency, uh, statements and all that. So, what we try to do is, uh, they're getting to the point to where if we don't have those body cameras, our cases probably won't be accepted at that point. So, we want to ensure that, uh, body cameras are gonna be top, also top priority for transparency. If I had to go to the third one, I would probably end up saying that the, the radios.
Thank you.
I'm gonna speak again, Mayor. I don't understand why this council can't see that it's important for the police department to have everything they need. And I'm gonna say another thing. This is the fourteenth budget that's been presented to me as long as I've been a city councilman, and all of a sudden, we have a new city manager, and all of a sudden, the city is in complete chaos, where we can't afford to give our police department what they, what they need. I don't understand that. And I don't understand where y'all are coming from. Would you go out in the street and stop in an unknown vehicle without body armor?
That's not what's happening. They have body armor.
But, but it's.
And it's all within the seven year cycle? No, I'm just saying it needs to be reevaluated. You're, you're making it look like that, that, that we're against the police.
And you're making it look like, like the city of Hondo is out, is such in poor shape financially that we can't afford that, when, when things other than the police department or the city is spending more money on staff that really shouldn't be there. It really shouldn't be there. And, and if, if y'all wanna get down to the nitty gritty, when we have staff that their pay raises increase from one month to the other month, that almost doubled, and now we can't afford to give the police department what they need? I mean, y'all, you, you guys need to open up your eyes. You, and, and you're one of them too, Bobby. Y'all need to open up your eyes and, and realize what is going on.
I mean, if you want to put it out there, you know, all we're saying is, is, is we're trying to be financially responsible.
Yes.
And, and giving one hundred and fifty dollars and justice.
Yeah, because y'all, y'all are trying to be financially responsible because of what the city managers i- is doing, and it's not right. It's not right.
Financially responsible for the citizens.
I've been here too many years before you came on board or he came on board.
Well, and we got a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar deficit for it, so.
We also have a good fund balance even with that. There you heard the man.
Somebody has to be, somebody has to be financially mindful of, of our situation.
I haven't seen a problem in fourteen years that I've been here. I've never seen a problem.
Some of my colleagues on this council are having a hard time justifying what our Hondo Police Department needs, and just, we're talking real quick, guys, because we're, we're killing it. How can some of my colleagues justify almost a fifty thousand dollar pay raise to one person? Fifty thousand dollars. From thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars to ninety-three thousand is more than fifty grand. If we can justify that. Hold on, hold on, hold on, Bobby, I've got the floor. How, how, I mean, we've been talking about this equipment, Brett.
I didn't just, I didn't justify that or approve that, so I don't know.
I don't, I don't really think that's part of the agenda, Adam.
No, we're, we're talking about justifying money.
I think, all I said, I'm, I'm only talking about.
But, but he should be mayor, because we're talking about spending taxpayers' money, and we should be able to talk about what, whatever's going on with the city now.
I agree with that.
It's not specific.
It's gotta be on the agenda though.
It's not on this agenda, Adam.
But I do agree with that.
Well, every time I'm gonna speak about it, you, I, I can't speak about it, because it's not on the agenda. Then we want something to agenda and it doesn't get put on. So, where do we go? What do we do?
Well, I'm only talking about this.
Somebody needs to put their foot down and get all this stuff that's going on straight now.
Well, I'm only talking about this item, the need of equipment, and I think, I think the chief said that eighty-five percent of the body armor needs to be replaced.
Yes, he did.
Not, so that's substantial part of that, so.
So, yeah, with the body armor and the, and the cameras, you're looking at seventy-five thousand, those are his top two for this year. I mean, I, I would be willing to do, I can sit down with the floor.
I may, I.
I agree with all of you guys.
I, I made a.
John, John, one more time.
And I think all of this stuff is important, but the fact is we're four hundred and fifty thousand in deficit.
There you go again.
That's true. We're not in a deficit because of the, the police department, that's for darn sure. I mean, that's not, is that what you're trying to say?
Doesn't matter where it was.
Yeah, it does matter. It, it does matter.
May I recommend something?
I made a motion for what's on the agenda, and we have a second, so I know it's gonna fail, but y'all, y'all go ahead.
Is any other discussion pertaining to this item?
Well, there's a motion, the second already made.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor of the motion is specify, say aye.
Aye.
Against?
Aye.
There we go.
If I understand it.
There we go.
Mr. Heiser.
No, because y'all, y'all, let, let me speak, man. Y'all three are set up with this guy.
No.
Whatever he says, that's, that's the way it's been since you got aboard, and especially when you got.
I'm here for common sense.
That's enough.
No, that's, well, you have a lot of common sense, you don't have anybody.
Motion fails two to three. And we have, uh, indicated that the ones that voted against it, right? Item number nine, discussion regarding refunding Hondo Economic Development Corporation sales tax revenue bond series two thousand and ten. Ms. Nacero?
Yes, Councilor Mayor, I present to you the opportunity to refund the Hondo Economic Development Corporation Sales Tax Revenue Bond Series twenty-ten to take advantage of the reduced current market rate. Currently or now, the interest rate is roughly four percent. This would reduce the refunding bonds to roughly one point six percent. Uh, the reduction in the interest rate will save the city roughly thirty-five thousand dollars. Uh, the refunding of the sales tax revenue bonds would also maintain the current amortization schedule, so it would not extend the term or maturity date of the bonds. If council would like to proceed with the refunding of these sales tax revenue bonds, we would set the sale for September twenty-seventh, having the EDC special meeting at five-thirty before council.
Judy, the, uh, say we're saving about thirty-five, thirty-six thousand?
Yes, sir.
Is that after the forty thousand dollars in costs?
Yes, so there would be thirty-five thousand altogether roughly. Andrew's working with Community National Bank to get a finalized interest rate, hopefully sometime this week.
With that, take consideration forty thousand dollars in fees?
Yes, I believe so, sir.
And also, I don't know if you mentioned that the EDC met the other day and, and approved that budget with that, uh, refund, funding involved?
Can we move your, your mic closer to your mouth?
Okay.
Some people can't hear.
That's, that's good. All right, you've heard the, uh, item, do we have a motion?
I thought there was no motion on this.
It's just discussing to set.
Just discussion, okay.
Mm-hmm, just for the sale on the twenty-seventh.
Have any questions then?
No, she answered my questions earlier.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Item number ten, discussion regarding amendments to section seven point oh eight of the Personnel Manual and establishing extreme event pay. Ms. Garcia?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I bring forward to you the policy for the extreme event pay. Um, on our last workshop, we discussed about including this with our current policy, which is the seven point eight, seven point zero eight, um, to include the extreme events and pay. The first four paragraphs is what's been revised, uh, with the assistance of our legal team. The last time we discussed, um, we had approved a thousand dollars per employee, and council recommended that we go back and look at a fair pay, so I'm coming forward to you with a discussion on possibly paying double time, uh, during these extreme events.
When, when did council request this? You said council requested that you look into, what, what, when did council request
At our last work session that we had, sir.
We were asked to define what the extreme pay and have to be fair with the allocation of the employees.
Correct.
Well, I got a few questions to ask on this item. First of all, we did, we did approve the a thousand dollar payment to all city employees that were actually out in the field. Electric department, street department, woman, police department, whomever they were. And I think there was seventy-two of them?
Yes, sir.
Seventy-two of them?
Yes, sir.
If I remember correctly. So, we paid them. We get, that, that was supposed to be a bonus for them, because, tell me if I'm wrong, when they were out after hours at twelve o'clock at night, they were paid?
Correct.
Time and a half, weren't they?
Uh, it was probably regular time, because they didn't go over their forty hours. But if they did go over their forty.
No, no.
If they went over their forty hours, they got overtime. And then additionally, they got the thousand dollar bonus or additional pay.
So, all these hours that our employees spent during the snowstorm or the, whatever y'all wanna call it, nobody got paid time and a half?
Only if they went over the forty hours.
May have been some.
It could have been some, yeah. I think the, the double time.
Well, 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 don't they work forty hours a week originally?
So, during the snowstorm, we actually closed most of our offices, and so the only people that came out were the people that lived in Hondo or were able to come out and help.
Those hours are counted in the forty hours.
So, the double time is to make it more variable?
Correct.
For, for the, you know, for working in harsh times?
Correct.
What, what is deemed a, um.
Extreme event.
Extreme event.
So, that's gonna.
Would that be something the council would determine?
That would be the city manager, sir.
Okay. Well, only the city manager would define that?
Yes, sir.
Why? If we're the ones that, uh, write policy, if we're the ones that approve policy, if we're the ones that vote on policy and procedure?
Can we hold on for a second for the call of Bobby drop? We're trying to get the back.
Okay, hold on a second. Anybody need a break? I guess we all do, but.
I'm here.
You here? All right, resume the, the discussion.
Yeah, where, where is it? Where, I, I guess, is it written anywhere?
It's written on the policy, sir.
It is written on the policy.
Yes, sir.
Right here.
On this one that you gave us?
Yes, sir.
In the red.
I don't see it. I mean, I.
And it was previously written that way for city emergencies. So, we just followed the policy that's already in place.
How, how many employees fall under this, this category, Sharon, that, that you wanna, under an extreme event?
It's gonna be all of our hourly employees if we do the double pay.
How many employees is that?
I don't see that.
Our FTEs.
Seventy-two last time, so.
Hundred and forty-two.
There were seventy-two last time, be a similar amount, I imagine.
Okay, ha- have y'all figured out what, being that we're trying to save the city money, taxpayers' money, have y'all figured out what is the cheapest for the city, whether to give them the, uh. What is it? Double time, double time or give them a bonus for what they did? Have y'all figured?
The double time would be more fair, and it, it'll be more fair. So, we had an employee during the snowstorm that.
No, I'm not talking about fairness. I'm talking about what would be best? How would the city save more money? If we pay them double time or we pay them the time that we have been and giving them a thousand dollar bonus?
You can't know that, because you don't know the number of hours that we're talking here. It would depend on, it would depend on how the hours work.
Okay, we're, we're talking about the, say for instance, in the extreme event that we had in the past.
It would probably be cheaper to do the hourly rate than, as I said, a thousand dollars per employee.
The double time?
Yes, sir.
So, if they worked, if they worked, uh.
I.
Twenty hours, twenty, if they worked twenty hours of double time and they made fifty bucks, that, that would be a thousand dollars. So, it, it would depend on, it would depend, you, 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 we can't know what would be, what would be more cost effective for the city.
Are you talking to me or are you talking to them?
Talking to you and, I'm talking to whoever's listening. So, so twenty, so, so if, if it went over the, the, the twenty hour range, then it would obviously be more than the thousand.
Well, maybe I should have asked you the question instead of her.
All right, come on.
Just trying to help, Johnny.
So, finish, finish the questions.
Ultimately, council, it's your decision. You let me know what y'all wanna do.
What would, why wouldn't?
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out, which would be best?
Why wouldn't we define an extreme event?
Yeah, I think we should define it.
Why, why wouldn't we define it?
We, we can come back, council. Yeah, let's, let's keep in mind this discussion period, and I think what we can do is possibly go back.
To the winter event, uh, I think we have hours still.
Yes.
And we can see what the cost would have been as far as double time versus paying everyone a thousand dollars and share that information with you next time. And then we can look at defining extreme event, and then we can also, you can make the decision whether you wanna make that call or allow it, the city manager make their call.
The way I read this, Sharon, paragraph two. If comparison to the event of the snowstorm, the freeze or freaky weather, the way this is written, that only was, uh, included, and it was for people that were actually out here in the middle of the night, sleeping in cots, sleeping in here, that, that, that pay was applied to. Paragraph two right here, the way I read it, is if he chooses to close City Hall, he's gonna choose to see who gets paid while they stay at home. It says here, city manager may decide to close City Hall and ask employees of the city to remain home except on as needed basis. So, he can pick and choose who he wants to stay at home on an as needed basis, on, on call perhaps, and get double time and a half or whatever it is that you guys are paying. So, the way it's written, it leaves for more inclusion of non-essential employees. And the way we've discussed this hazard state since our freeze, we were talking about, essential people. Correct? Or, so, the, the way it's written and the way I read it, is we're trying to include more people that are not essential. Not all employees of our city staff, and they're awesome. Office people and outside people, PD, it doesn't matter. But not all of them are essential. But not all of them are essential. And, and the way this is written, we're, we're leaving ourselves an avenue to include more people that we shouldn't.
It's been suggested that we table the item, let them bring back after listing our concerns into the next meeting, the next regular meeting.
Wes had a comment, though.
Well, I, I was just gonna talk, talk it out of agreement from where we're reading that. Basically, it gives the city manager discretion to decide which employees are necessary during extreme event. And then he, and the ones who aren't won't receive the double time pay. The ones who are actually out in the field working, which, assuming he's doing his job, which this is a personnel decision, and he's a straight to decide to serve public works or police or whatever, maybe they're gonna receive double time. And so I think it's, I think it's fair. I just think we need to define extreme events and maybe add some more to it, but I, I think this is the better way to do it than just give a thousand dollar bonus to, so let's say somebody only worked four hours during the snowstorm and somebody worked one o'clock thirty. Given the same bonus isn't really that fair.
I think that the staff provided us a breakdown and list of the hours that were worked.
Well, I agree. I, I agree. It's not fair the way it is.
There were some who worked a lot less and received the same bonus, and it's those who worked in the middle time. And I, I just don't think that's fair.
And I think those operational decisions of who is gonna be brought to work is probably gonna be filtered down to your direct reports.
That's correct.
To then, to, to David and so forth.
Do you want to make changes and approve it tonight or do you want to have it come back?
No, it's, it's only for discussion only tonight. It's, it's not for approval or disapproval.
I think it's a good idea, though. So I like, I like what, I like what we're starting at at least.
Okay.
Okay, we don't even need a motion to table instance. Item number eleven, discussion of possible action regarding a proposal to renew employee benefits.
Good evening again, mayor and council. I bring forward the employee benefits renewal proposal. Our rates did go up this year. And we have two options that we presented to you for you to review. So I just need to know which option you guys want to go forth with.
So we already have more than half of the employees on option one, right? Seventy-two employees, I believe is what it says here. So seventy-two employees will not have a period of deduction.
But if we go with that option, it costs us more money.
If we go with option one, the increase of rates will be fifteen percent. If we go with option two, our increase will only be five point five percent. And I do have Jenny here from Marsh for them, if you have additional questions.
Do you want to come forward?
So Sharon, does this body decide what you guys are gonna get or do you guys pick?
No, you do.
We pick the plans. They pick their own individual plans out of those, out of that option two, which I think we'll, we'll end up with.
Well, they, they
I have a, I have a question for
Yes, sir.
For you, I guess. Regardless, regardless, well, which option would be the best equivalent to what city employees have now?
Okay, so mayor, council, I'm Jenny Half with Marsh. And to answer your question, option one renews exactly with the exact same plans that they have today. Option two adds a third option in that they'd still have the option to have the two plans to, that they have today. But what we do is we take and put an HMO as the base plan, which is why it reduces the cost from fifteen percent to five point five percent. Because now the city pays one hundred percent of the base plan, which now becomes the HMO. Your employees can still purchase the mid-plan, which is what is currently the base, or they can purchase the buy-up plan. We just put a third option. So it's a triple option for everybody. And the other reason we did that is we also wanted to reduce the dependent cost. So for those employees who want to put their dependence on, and I have twenty-three employees with dependents, if we accept the fifteen percent rate increase, then of course they're accepting the rate increase as well for, to add their dependence. So we just gave them a, a lower premium option in the HMO.
But with the HMO, it says here that the family deductibles are gonna be higher and the co-pay is gonna be higher. And the only, the only difference probably, what I highlighted in the blue is that they have to go to their primary care physician to get a referral to a specialist.
Only if they go on the HMO, right?
Right.
But you can still pick the other plan that's, that's comparable to what they have right now.
For nineteen, nineteen dollars and sixty-five cents per pay period, if you're an employee only, you can elect the plan you're on today. But the plan that they're on today currently costs them zero because the city pays a hundred percent of it on the base. But to your point, sir, it is a very different plan on the HMO. They will have to go through primary care physicians to go see specialists. We did an analysis of the physicians that are on the HMO versus the PPO what we call a disruption analysis. And there were two, two physicians, ninety-nine percent of them were on the HMO plan. There were two physicians that were not on the HMO, but all the other physicians were. But it is, like you say, it's somewhat of a hassle because now they'll choose a primary care physician. And, and before they go to a specialist, they have to have a referral. And the benefits are, as you can see, not as rich as the current base plan. So that's definitely something to consider. However, they will still have the option to, to choose the base plan, I mean, the mid-plan. Base currently, which will now become the, the mid-plan, effective ten-one with the, the additional contribution via payroll.
Twenty dollars more, though, right?
It's nineteen sixty-five per pay period.
More?
So it's
A pay period, so it's forty bucks a month.
So it's forty dollars a month.
Oh, so it's doubled.
Under the HMO, are the local hospital and our local doctors all involved in all that?
Not all, but the ones that your employees see, yes, sir. It was in Sabanol, I think.
Those that work for the hospital, they're all in, right?
The, well, I can't make that blanket statement, but I will say that every one of the hospitals is in network. And the current physicians that your employees are seeing are in network. There could be some in the hospitals that I'm not aware of.
Well, the doctors work for the hospital, so if it, if they're working for the hospital, it'll be covered under the
In general, but this is insurance, so I don't want to make that blanket statement.
It's important that, that our local physicians are, are on the plan.
I understand.
Are they, Sharon?
All but two that are employees currently seen were on the, and the two, they were from, not from Hondo.
Sabanol, I think.
So what are you guys on? Sharon, what is, what are, what are you and your colleagues on? Of what are these two?
What are you recommending? Yeah, that's what I want to know.
Right. What are you recommending?
We're recommending adding the HMO just to be a little bit more cost effective to, towards the city and also to give the employees that option.
That's option two?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any, I know this might be a dumb question, but do you have any idea what the take rate would be for the HMO? I mean, I, I mean, you didn't, you, you didn't talk to any employees or did you talk to?
No, we haven't talked to the employees. The HMO basically is, it's, the benefit is a little bit better in the amount of, that it covers. Right now, the base plan only covers fifty percent. The HMO actually is gonna cover seventy percent. So if they only see their primary care physician locally, then I would see that op, choosing that option.
Option two.
The HMO option?
Yeah, two, because it goes, because it just, just, because it goes, it's going down. I mean, it's a less, it's a less of an increase.
Correct.
I might be able to answer that for you, sir. So it, in our experience, though, it's a good question, like who's gonna go on the HMO plan possibly? In our experience, what we see are the people who have dependents will probably migrate to the base plan or the new HMO plan because of the cost. And then most of the time, if it's, and this is just like speaking in trend, if it's only, only twenty dollars per pay period, you'll find that people will pay more to stay on the, the mid-plan. You'll probably find that. If it were fifty dollars and above, then they start making different decisions. But the twenty dollars per pay period, I don't know why, but that seems to be like something that is quote affordable.
But that could, that could hurt them, though, when they, when they get their bill, their explanation of benefits and then and it's, it's, it's higher cost out of pocket after, you know.
Yeah, the interesting thing about this plan, and it was actually thoughtful when we were making the recommendation, is when you talk about insurance and what it was designed for, which is a catastrophic event, cancers or strokes or whatever, when you go to the hospital and you're put inpatient. We kept the maximum out of pocket on the HMO plan at fifty-six hundred dollars, which is exactly what the mid-plan is. And I will tell you that the majority of our clients, that max out of pocket, what we're seeing these days is upwards of eighty-one hundred dollars max out of pocket. So the idea that fifty-six hundred is their worst case scenario or max out of pocket in a calendar year, while that's still a lot, it's a lot better than a lot of our clients because we kept it consciously, made that thoughtful decision to keep it there. So that when these folks, not when, but if, God forbid, they do have a catastrophic, catastrophic event, that it will still be the same max out of pocket in either plan. And I do know from a claims standpoint, which is why we got, part of the reason we got an increase this year, coming off of rate passes for three years in a row, we cut to this year and we had a hundred and two percent loss ratio. And I've got eleven high claimants that are currently going on. So it's possible that those folks might stay in the mid and the high so that they don't have to mess with going through primary care physicians and stuff like that. But you might find the people who don't have a lot of claims migrate to the HMO.
If I could add something, they kind of mentioned it, but when you make it more affordable for the city, for the employees, you also make it more affordable for those employees that want to add their dependents because the city's, the city's not paying for the dependents. So when you try to make, when you make a plan more affordable, you're also making it more affordable for their depend, their spouses and their children. This HMO is the same HMO that you buy on the marketplace. So if you don't have group health insurance, the only option you have through Blue Cross is the HMO. So this, this plan matches directly with the marketplace plans as well. And I, I will add that most of the large employers in the city, the county, the school district, they don't have a, a free plan. So you're, you're still offering a good value to the employees versus your school district. So.
Okay. And we consider options.
Correct.
I think to me, like, the logical thing is to go with, with two. It is an action item, how y'all feel.
I think we're just in discussion, right?
Impossible action.
Do we need a motion, mayor?
Was there?
You're looking for a motion, right?
Yes, sir.
Was there a loss ratio? Do you justify that fifteen percent increase?
Hundred and two, they said.
Mayor, I move that we go along with option two on this item.
Any further discussion? Ball and clear of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number twelve, discussion Item number twelve, discussion and possible action to amend the lease agreement with the Hondo Junior Owls Association to allow for the assessment of entry fees during their athletic events. Carissa Gonzalez and Rowley Tarte.
Good evening, council, mayor. In July of this year, Hondo Junior Owls entered into a license agreement for a non-exclusive license to use city sports fields to conduct practices and a conditioning camp through their twenty-twenty-one season. Due to the inability to use Berry Field, the league was forced to relocate games to the sports field being used for their practice. Hondo Junior Owls Commissioner Raoul Duarte is requesting an amendment be made to their twenty-twenty-one license agreement, allowing the league to host regular season games and collect parking admission fees at the following schedule of events. The request is being made to allow the league to offset costs for officials and security mandated by North American Independent Football Federation. In order to collect fees, the league is requesting to close spats between the soccer fields and the sports complex on game days. The league will ensure the opening of the road prior to the end of the last game each week. Mr. Duarte is with us as well. If you have any questions for him regarding specific details of games or fees that need to be covered during their season, but we are looking for some direction from council on how to move forward.
Question, I understand there was a request by the, by the Junior Owls to use the area to the east of the soccer fields that they use for practice. What happened to that request?
That request was approved. That is the area that they're using right now that they are asking.
Practice, no?
Yes.
But they don't want to use that area for, for the future for their games?
That is the same area we're asking, but their, their contract did not allow for games and does not allow to charge admission to the games.
Okay, so it's the same area?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Now, it's not gonna conflict with soccer at all. Soccer has games during this time, don't they?
Correct, yes, sir. We've discussed scheduling with them and besides some double usage during the week for practices, they have game days on different days. Soccer's already said, you know, their usage isn't gonna interfere with theirs, so they were okay with sharing the area. There's plenty of space out there.
This area, it was not used before?
Correct, yes, sir.
Except for their practice.
Yes, sir.
Is this where you're putting in irrigation right now?
Yes, yes.
So, so soccer doesn't charge for admission? I know that, I mean, well, it never did when I was on there, but is that, so that, that would be separate? They would have it like marked off to where you're gonna charge for admission to get in, but even when, but when there's soccer going on?
Well, their, their soccer games will be on, or soccer's on Sunday.
Oh, okay, oh.
They play Saturday, so they won't have that, that overlap in, in spectators.
Are these, are these children?
On this communication, it says the left parking and, and admission fee is that a D? Are they managing to provide parking and admission fee together or one or the other? Who was it?
Are you asking to, I believe he's asking to charge an admission fee.
It's an admission fee to go into the game.
It'll be
They park, they're still gotta, as soon as they park, they're gonna pay to get in. That's for the admission and
So they're, they're gonna pay parking and that gets them in the game?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just one charge. I mean, they can walk in, they're gonna pay. If they're gonna park, they're gonna pay. It's just a matter of coming in for the game.
Are these, are these Hondo kids?
Yes, sir, a hundred and four of them.
This is football?
Football and cheer.
Tackle football and cheer.
Yes, sir, starts at age four to age twelve.
Any other question? Motion?
I guess, I guess, I have one more question. And I know, I know there's, there's, there's some venues here in Hondo that charge. You know, Little League obviously doesn't charge. Hondo U Soccer doesn't charge. I've always been against basketball charging for parents to come watch their children play.
That's the only way we'll pay our referees and our security. We have to have it.
Okay.
We don't have volunteer refs. This is
Well, they're paid other, and, and again, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just thinking through this right now. So I'm not, I'm not. Yeah, I do, some people collect it, you know, Little League collects it, soccer collects it through registration fees. And you're, and you're, you would reduce registration fees to help, and that would be to help cover your cost. That's what you're, that's what you're saying.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Soccer doesn't charge the admission?
No.
No, sir.
They, they, referees charge them?
It's their own coaches.
Okay.
Volunteers for soccer.
Well, for the younger, when I was, when I was involved in soccer, that we paid, we paid umpires, refs, refs for the, for the older leagues. But yeah, for the little kids where it was not competitive, they, so I, but again, you're gonna get the money from the parents one way or the other. It's just, I mean, you know, Little League and soccer would put that into the, into their registration, so, I mean.
Just to let you know, on a, for us, trying to put that price on the parents, we barely get enough to cover for their cheer outfits and their
Right.
entries and insurances that we have to cover. We can't charge.
Yeah, yeah, and you have more expensive equipment, too.
There's no waste.
Yeah, no, I understand. I think, no, I'm, I'm, you've answered my question. Thank you.
Open for a motion. Give a second. Any further discussion? Ball and clear of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Against?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Tarte. Item number thirteen, discussion and possible action regarding the placement on
Did, did
He voted yes. He voted aye, but he voted late.
I did vote. No, he didn't vote.
He can vote. I'm asking about he, oh.
Oh, okay. Oh, he abstained. He abstained.
Right, okay, that's, I wanted to make that clear.
Bobby voted yes.
Yes.
Four, four zero, yeah. All right, item thirteen, discussion and possible action regarding the placement on the city of Hondo two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two budget to staff positions of assistant city secretary, administrative assistant to the city manager, and assistant director of public works. Councilman Villa and you talked, you put this on the agenda. Which one, which one?
You want me to, you
One of y'all needs to lead the discussion.
The, these positions have, have been on, on the cities and, and if, for now, if these positions, our city manager feels like we don't need them, which I think we do need them, I would like for them to be not eliminated, but left on the left on the budget.
They would be placed on the budget because they're not
Placed on the budget even if we don't fill out the positions right now. I don't, I don't think that we should do a way. We have a new city secretary right now, and I think that an assistant city secretary that we do have, or the interim assistant city secretary that, that we do have. that, that we do have, would be of great use to our city secretary right now. And I don't know why it needs to be eliminated.
I asked for this item to be on the agenda, to pick it back off of Councilman Villa. It has been deemed by an unpopular vote that these positions are no longer needed. I feel and I believe that in the future, we're going to need these positions back. And we're going to have to come back to square one, put them back on. We've been without a, and it's in the paper, so I think I can talk about it. We've been without a public works administrative assistant since I can remember. And in, within a week, proof, it appeared in the paper. And I, I think it's been filled. But yet we want to remove positions that have been part of our staff for years. I could care less what they do in other cities. I am concerned about Hondo. My agenda is Hondo. I don't have another agenda. Hondo. So that's why I placed, I wanted to place on the agenda so that we can keep them, place them on the budget and keep them there as those positions will be needed in the future. We all know that. Unfortunately, right now, we're picking sides. And that's not the way that we want to do business. So that's why I requested for them to be put back on as an action item on tonight's agenda.
So, so my, I'm, my mission is also Hondo, just for the record, since we're saying that. And I would say that, you know, we, we still, this is like anything else we talk about here. I mean, sometimes these discussions are very tough, especially when people are in those positions. But we have to be good stewards of the money, the tax dollars, the, 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 that we, that we get to run this city. And yes, jobs, certain positions could come back at a later time and be deemed necessary. But positions come and go and they need to be reevaluated often. That's just, that's just business 101 right there. They need to be evaluated. You know, the assistant secretary position was never budgeted. It was brought in. That's something that, that, that nobody's mentioned here. You know, one of the positions reports directly to Scott. He's telling us, I don't need that position. Okay? We have David Baker back there, Assistant Director of Public Works.
We can't discuss his position right now.
They have determined, they have determined, these, these positions, they have determined that these, that these, this is what the people of Hondo need to understand. They, the staff has determined that these positions are, are not necessary to, to, to make the City of Hondo work properly.
They've, they've been working for years. It's been working for years. What, and all of a sudden, all of a sudden, here we go again. All of a sudden, we don't need, and it's been like that for years. And all of a sudden, it doesn't work. All of a sudden, we're spending too much money. But then again, we could give raises to employees that are already here. And you need to open your eyes, man. You, you really do.
Brett, I, I wrote myself a note here, thinking ahead of what response or pushback that I will get in my comments that I made. And the notes that I wrote here, I've already named one because it's in the paper. The public works administrative assistant is not in the current budget. In the current budget, and I think it's filled. And then the HR director position is not in the current budget. I'm talking about where we at right now. I'm not talking about what's coming up after first. It's not in the current budget right now. And that is part of our deficit because are we saving money? No, but we're talking about positions. That position, it was in the paper.
Yeah, I would like to know more about that.
It's not in the paper. I mean, it's, it's not in the budget right now.
Yeah, and we should, we should definitely talk about that as a council at some point.
All of a sudden.
I think the agenda item is these three positions.
Right, but I wrote myself a note because I probably figured you or Bobby would give me a little bit of rebuttal. And it's, it's good. It's good for us to talk about it. But we're not saying, I, I'm not saying let's create new positions. I'm saying let's keep positions that we had on the position, I mean, listed as a position within the budget. It's been deemed by staff that they're not needed. Whether, whatever we do, we can talk, blue in her face, me and Councilman Villa. And our remarks and our comments are going to fall on deaf ears with this particular issue, along with others. But we're talking about item number thirteen.
Well, I, I think staff is in the, is in the best position, more than anybody sitting up here to tell, to determine what, what needs do they, that they have.
And you might be right, and I agree with you on, on certain things. But as the mayor stated to you weeks ago, and I've said it to you today, we're talking about the budget cycle. It's budget season. And this is when you discuss those items, not afterwards.
I agree.
You know.
I think, I think it's healthy to discuss it.
Right, but, well, healthy is a broad word. It's not going to get us nowhere if we don't believe in the same concept.
Right, and I believe in being financially responsible. And so, and I, and if, and if positions come up later, you know, one, one thing everybody else needs to understand is there were some positions added to this budget too. And so, and so we're, that, that, that all goes, that, that all goes down to the evaluating of positions, reevaluating them every, you know, just to say we've had it in the budget forever, that doesn't make it a good idea.
But, but two are filled that are not in the budget. How, how is that, how is that cost effective?
I don't, I don't know. I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm calling it your word, but I don't know that that's true. Those aren't on the agenda. That's something we should talk about with, with staff, when, when.
I, like I said, I can talk about the public works administrative system because it's in the paper. Six thousand people saw it. Maybe you don't read the Hondo Urban Herald. I do.
I do.
And it was there. So, if it's in the paper, I'm going to discuss it. I'm sorry. And we're talking about positions, that's a position. The other, the other position is already filled. It's, it's, it's live. So it's not something I'm making up as I have been alluded to.
I didn't say that.
I, I have been alluded to making stuff up. And, and it's in writing. I'm not talking about something. It's in writing. And this is in writing. It's right there.
Again, we need to discuss that, but I think, I think, but that's not the agenda item right now that we're discussing. So I said, I've, I've said, I've said what I think is, is.
And I have too, and you keep, you keep rebutting.
And Councilman Williams is right. This, this, the agenda item is these three positions. So it is an action.
So, okay, so do we need to put the other positions on the agenda so we can discuss them? Okay, I would like for them to be put on next meetings agenda so we can discuss those positions that Mr. Duarte and, and, and I are discussing or want to talk about.
It'll be on Monday.
Because if we're saving money here, we need to be saving money on the other too.
Which position specifically? Is it the AA to the public works and?
Well, I, I understand that there's a public works admin that was recently hired. And I would like to discuss the HR position also.
All right, but we're looking at item thirteen. Any, any action?
I move that we leave these three positions available on the budget.
Place them on.
I second.
Have a motion and second. We have any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Against the motion, say aye.
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 Motion fails, three and two. Item fourteen, discussion and possible action to include in the City of Hondo 2021, 2022 budget funds for a 5% merit raise for all city public works employees and a 4% merit raise for all other city employees excluding the city manager who is a contract employee. Again, this is Councilman Villa and Councilman U Tarte.
Mayor, I had originally, when the city manager asked for us to give him recommendations that we wanted to be put on the, on the, on the, on the budget. This is one that I put on, on the budget, but then again, he turned around and, and switched and, and made his own recommendations. I had originally sent the city manager my recommendation for a 5% merit raise increase to all public work employees, which are the employees that, in the street department, water department, they go out, they're working out in the heat, electric department with their water up to their knees and leave the 3% merit raise across the board for all other employees. Where this 4% merit raise came up, I don't know. And I understand, but looking at what, what is on the budget, the city manager has a 3% merit increase raise for himself. Well, it shouldn't be on there. He's, he's on the contract. Why is he including himself on the 3% merit raise? I don't understand that.
He's a, he's a city employee, isn't he?
He's on contract.
Yeah, yeah. So, so is it, I mean, I just want, I have a question about this because.
No, the, the, the budget that you represent had 3% merit.
The, the first, you're correct, the first one, but we revised it after our budget workshop and it, it reflects 4% now.
He did increase it to 4%.
Yes. So, so this, in, in this, in this action, in this agenda item, it says that this is a merit raise. Okay, so to me, to me, this seems more like a cost of living adjustment, not a merit raise.
Well, whatever you want to call it, that's what it is.
Those are quite different. Merit is based on evaluations. It's based on performance. Cost of living adjustments is based on the market. It's based on affordability. Yeah, it's based on inflation.
What's been on the budget, what's been on the budget always is, is a merit raise, not a cost of living. It's always been a merit raise.
But there's, but there's no evaluations. There's no.
No, it's clear across the board.
So, so to me, this, this plays into, this is a cost of living adjustment. And, and to, no?
No.
Was there any?
It was across the board increase. It was a discussion we had, a cost of living, yes.
Was there any, was there any evaluations done on any, any of the employees?
Previously?
Yeah.
I think last year.
Last year, we didn't have any evaluations.
So, so this, this is, this is essentially a cost of living adjustment, which, which should be straight across the board for all city employees. So then what's it, what was in the proposed budget originally was 3%. Then, you know, y'all, you know, people recommended a higher, a higher figure and, and.
And we adjusted.
Raised it to 4%. Now, I, I would, like everybody else here, I would love to pay 10%, 20%. Every, everybody would love to do that because we do have great employees here. But we have to look at the, the market. We have to look at affordability. Again, this, this goes into the same thing that we've been talking about all night, and that's being financially responsible. The, uh, uh, you know, raises in labor never go away. They just get compounded. It's just, it just gets more and more. So every year, if somebody comes back and says, let's do 7%, 7%, 7%, what are the consequences of that ultimately? The consequences are future pay cuts, cut more staff. Those are the consequences because we have a certain, we have a certain amount of resources.
Raise some employees.
Certain amount of resources and we have to be good stewards of those resources.
Same thing. Isn't your 4% merit ra, a merit raise rather than across the board?
It was across the board, sir.
Here's it for, across the board?
And I, and I, and I, and I, and this is nothing to do with anything that y'all are saying. Scott is a city employee. He's, he, he should be included in that cost.
He's on the contract. Don't you understand that? He is a city employee.
Yes.
Under contract. Why should he get, he hasn't even been evaluated yet.
Half, half the employees at CPS Energy are under contract and they're all handled the same way as any full-time employee.
The employees of the City of Hondo are not under contract. He's the only one.
I know, I'm saying that's, that, he has a contract, yes, but he's, he's a, he's a full-time employee of the City of Hondo. Is he not?
He is.
Under contract. There's a difference.
I, I understand the difference.
Okay, there, there's a difference.
Okay, I, I, I believe it should be across the board. Where we go, we can, we can. So what's the, what's the?
Here we go again, okay, let, let, let's.
What, what is the difference, what's the reason for the 5% for public works and then 4% for everyone else?
Ask him. I'm the, I'm, I'm, I'm not the one that put that.
You're the one that puts 5% in versus the four.
Right.
This is yours.
Yeah, but, but the way it's written, it's not what I wanted.
Oh, that's not what you want.
No.
So, but it's. You want it across the board too, Johnny. Okay, if you use two sides, it's, it's then.
It's my item, but it's not written right.
You know, across the board takes away all the merit and, and involved in raises. You know, so you don't have any incentive.
So we're talking about a goal and so what's the difference in 4% and 5%? What's, what's that figure?
About 65,000?
65,000.
We're not discussing a big cost of living allowance. We need to clarify that.
But, but, well.
Look, let, let, let me explain again. Let me explain again. Let me explain again what I submitted to Scott, okay? There was a 3%, the way it's been worded always, 3% merit raise for all employees. That's what was on the original first budget that, that, that got put in front of us. He asked, he asked everybody, which only Mr. Duarte, myself and Mayor submitted to him because y'all.
I submitted, I, don't say that because I submitted. I didn't.
Well, he, he told me that nobody else had submitted.
I submitted verbal.
Those were, those were his words right there.
I did not submit a paper. No, I did not. But I did give him verbal direction.
Well, it should have been written out.
That was not.
He said that nobody else did. Anyway, my recommendation was the 3% for all employees except for the people, the public works employees to be increased to five. I didn't say the whole, and now this is entirely different.
Sir, this is exactly what you sent me, what's on this agenda.
I, I don't have what I submitted to you in my, in this folder here, but I have it in the truck and I can go get it.
Well, I can, I can provide you what you sent me, sir.
I thank personally, I thank.
Do you have a copy of what I sent you?
Uh, I can.
Do you have my copy?
Of what you emailed?
No, I didn't email it. I handed it to Sharon.
Well, what's on tonight's agenda, you sent to me, and did he send you a copy as well?
No. When you asked, Scott, when you asked us
Right.
To submit to you what we.
Oh, you're talking about after the first budget workshop, okay.
And, and it's all been changed since then. And I didn't email it to you. I handed it over to Sharon.
Okay, which, what's on tonight's agenda is exactly what you.
No, it's not exactly, no, no.
All right.
It's not.
Well, it concerns me that we're talking about it across the board instead of a merit. We've always done merit. There's no incentive for employees to perform in any fashion if it's across the board.
I know, but this, this merit, you're, you're, you're doing merit. You're changing the percentage of, of merit based on what department you're in. That's not a, a merit.
Not me.
Well, no, no, I'm saying that's what's on this agenda.
I'm just saying.
So a merit, a merit is, I would agree that merit is, is how it should be, but that would be based on individual evaluations and that, that's what merit means.
Which we've always done. She says we didn't do it this last year.
Right, but, but.
We've always done it before.
Wording it as a, as an increase for one department, this, and every, and then the rest of the people, this, that's not, that is, that is by definition not merit. That's, that's a, that's a, that's a cost of living. It's a cost of living.
Well, it's a merit for the ones even at four, at five.
Yeah. Well, well. If your inflation's 34%, you're giving 4%, that's basically keeping your salary at the same rate for the next year. And the CPI is way under that too. And I, but I still, I still, you know, I think we all would agree that 4% is, is, is good. That's a very good, that's a very good cost of living adjustment after. I haven't seen that.
No, merit.
Merit. It's always been merit and it will be merit. We gotta agree around.
It's being used incorrectly. That's not, merit is based on individual performance.
Whatever, whatever we get to needs to be merit.
But they, not everybody in a department gets the same. It gets based on individual performance. That would require each department, review each employee and then give them a raise based on their performance. And for one person, it might be more and for another, it might be less, but it's not across the board.
Mayor, what till this, this year, it was done that way?
If I can clarify, so what would happen previously from what I can tell in budgeting? They would budget 3% across the board for every employee and employees could get a range from 1% to 5% being the highest.
That's, that's.
So the cap is lowest you could get is 1% up to 5%. But for budgeting purposes, they budgeted 3% across the board to account for the cost.
Okay, yes, okay, that makes sense.
That's a merit, not cost of living.
That, that is merit, yes.
Yeah, so that was what the previous administration did. We budgeted 3% across the board and then employees were evaluated and they could fall from 1% up to 5%.
Right. Right, that, that would only work if you budgeted across the board.
Yes.
Right, thank you for clarifying.
What we've already done.
Yeah, so it needs to be across the board is what we're, is what we're getting at.
Across the board merit.
Yes.
For the budget.
For the budget.
Each employee's getting that three percent, it just.
Right.
It's going to fall within the one to five range.
Right, the, your, your exceptional employees will be at the five, your, 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 your less, your less effective would be in the one range.
So if you all wanted to do that, we had changed it this year to budget four percent across the board. It would eliminate the bell curve type situation based on merit, it would just be four percent, four percent across the board, every employee. If we would like to do the merit where they can fall between one and five percent, then we would go back to budgeting just three percent across the board. And then giving the employees the opportunity, depending on their evaluation, they would fall at one percent up to five.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm with the mayor, I mean, I agree that, 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 that having an incentive to perform at a different level. Is, is, that's where you, that's where your employees shine. And, uh, so, you know, I, I don't know, you know, how, how, how you work that out with the numbers. They, that you, that could be true, but you could, you could do four percent.
The only thing, the only op- obstacle you face if, say, everyone does exceptional, right, and everyone qualifies for, say, four percent. Essentially, we only budgeted for three percent. So we could be a little more conservative and consist, stay at the four percent budget amount, giving us a little bit of cushion. Absorbing the cost if, you know, a majority of employees receive a higher percentage rather than a lower percentage, but.
But, but not, not every, not every employee performs exceptionally. Every single per, I mean, exceptional should be in a, you talk about the bell curve, you know, the needs improvement, the exceptional. Should be in the ten percent range each and then everybody else should kind of fall.
And so that's why they would budget just the three percent across the board.
I would say before, I, I think, I think this last year, you had a lot of employees who were above beyond.
Absolutely. Oh, I, I, I don't, I'm not saying that they don't, I'm just saying that generally speaking, you're, you're going to have, any organization is not going to have. Every employee that, that, that performs at an exceptional level. So, I, I, I'm okay with the, with the bucket of dollars being at four percent and then adjusting accordingly that way.
The item we have on the agenda is, I've read, uh, we didn't take action on that particular item tonight.
I move, uh, Mayor, that we get a five percent merit raise for all, all employees, excluding the city manager.
Now, wait, 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 you want to give five percent for merit raise for the public works employees, or you said all employees?
For the public works employees and the four percent merit raise for all city, uh, uh, city employees excluding the city manager.
That's what you.
Who is a contract employee.
Is that what you understood, Mr. Tarki? And your second?
Yes.
Okay, now we have discussion.
Yeah, that's, that's not a fair assessment considering that, uh, that people weren't individually evaluated. And I, I can't say that there's, I, I would, I would bet you there's some people that may work in, you know, in public works. That are going to get five percent and then there could be somebody that's exceptional, that's outside of public works, that won't get, that, that's going to get four percent. And that's not, that's not fair, I think we should have a.
The word merit to me is better, I hope they're evaluated to earn that five percent. I mean, I've evaluated people before, before I, when I was.
Porkey, it doesn't matter what you say anymore, we know what the outcome's going to be, you know, I made the motion, you seconded, it's going to die with you.
If it was, if it was fair to all the employees.
It is fair, and that's the way it's always been.
But we're budgeting, look, y'all just.
That's not, no.
We're, we're, we're not saying.
No, we're, we're budgeting, yes, we're budgeting.
He, he, he said, we're going to do this.
So, so your, your motion is.
That's what the motion is.
That's my motion and that's why the items on the agenda.
That's not how it's written. It's written to include in the city budget funds for a five percent merit. But that doesn't necessarily mean that we have to give one across the board. What she was saying is, it's based on merit on the individual.
Everything's, everything's going to be decided when y'all approve the city budget.
That's not, that's not, we're not getting there.
We're talking about item fourteen.
We're trying to walk through these things.
Well, that, that's what deciding, I already made the motion.
But I'm clear about when the motion ends.
The motion is the way it's written right here.
For a five percent across the board.
I read it here, five percent.
No, the way it's written, the way it's put in the, on the agenda.
Read it.
You want me to read it again? I read it once already. I move that we include in the city budget funds, funds for five percent merit raise for all city public work employees. And four percent merit raise for all other employees excluding the city manager who is a contract employee.
Okay, and that is your second, Mr. Tarki?
My second.
All right, any other discussion?
So, I mean, I'm still, merit to me means they're going to get evaluated, are they not? And I think that's.
Yeah, they have to.
David?
Yes. Yes, well, yes, they're going to be evaluated.
Is it, is, is it, okay, so that, what, what, what y'all are, what y'all are saying, what Judy's saying, what you're saying, doesn't fit into this.
We were talking about originally doing across the board and we discussed it in the original bu- budget workshop, but I agree that there needs to be a performance evaluation. And we will evaluate the employees.
Okay, so, so if we're voting, if, and, and I'm just trying to get clarification from you because this is your, your line item. Are you saying that every, hold on, hold on?
Then you just hear, I've read it twice.
I've read it too.
I've read it twice.
How many times do I need to read it?
Hold, hold, hold.
Johnny, we have to, I, I gotta be able to ask you a question. What I'm saying is, are you suggesting, is the intent behind your motion? That every public works employee is going to get five percent and then everybody else except for Scott is going to get four percent?
Is that what it says here? Merit, is it that what I read?
No.
That's what I read, what, what, what's right here is what I read.
Okay, well, then that's, then that's an easy one, because that's not fair, so.
All right, any other discussion?
So, if they don't say you evaluate one of your staff members and they don't get that window raise. Will they then get something like a growth plan?
That's the way it's set up. That's the way it's set up. If they don't get any raise at all, they get a growth plan.
Okay.
All right.
So we're up to five percent merit raise for all? I, I, I'm trying to understand this because I don't think that as it's written, it's very clear.
But you're right, it ought to be up to five.
So, is it up to five, is it a five, up to five percent merit raise for all public works employees and up to four percent for all other employees?
Matter, in the past, in the past.
I know, but it, that's what we're talking about.
In the past, it's, it's, it's always been.
But you said one to five.
Merit raise, whether it's a merit raise or a cost of living across the board for all city employees. Haven't we approved that?
Well, Councilman Heiser's right, it shouldn't be up to in both cases.
Based on performance, it should be, there should be more revisions to this motion.
That's not the question that I asked, Mayor. Mayor, before, before this budget. Hasn't there always been in the budget a three percent raise increase? Merit raise, whatever you want to call it, merit, cost of living, a clear across the board for all city employees?
Evidently, up, up until this year, my memory is, it's always been a three percent merit raise to be evaluated. One employee may get one, may get, one may get four.
That's the way it's always been.
That's the way it's always been, based on evaluation. And it, it, the supervisors are the ones that have to do that evaluation.
So it's not a three percent across the board, so you're saying, Mayor, is it, is it on merit or not?
It's the same thing.
No, that, that motion, that, that I would, I would vote to approve. Yeah. That's, that's, those are apples and oranges here.
That's the way it's always been, that's what, that's what a merit raise is.
Yeah, it was budgeted for three percent across the board to fall in that range of the one to five percent. So not every employee.
And the long building is trying to get it up to five percent.
So, I mean, if you continue that.
Isn't it so difficult to understand?
If you continue that process, everyone would have that possibility of getting five percent, it would just fall down up to their evaluation. So, if we, if you want to continue that.
In the department's budget too, right?
Yes.
That department can't go over the three percent.
So we budget three percent across the board and then it ranges from one to five percent. If you continue that, you're not going to limit someone to, say, four percent in certain departments, you still leave over, open that opportunity where they get anywhere from one to five percent. And that would be any employee, but for budgeting purposes, we would just budget three percent for the cost.
And, and the mayor's right, I would vote for, I mean, e- every department has to stay within the three percent and that would ensure that we didn't go over budget.
They don't have to spend the three percent either.
Yeah.
We know they will.
Yeah. And so, so I, I, I mean, I, I think, you know, I think putting four percent in the budget. Four percent of total labor in the budget and then it, and then based on, on performance. You, you get that, you can, you could even maybe adjust that even, you know, maybe, maybe, maybe some get more than five, you just depended on the dollars that are there.
Well, would y'all like to go ahead and, and vote on this motion?
Yes.
All right, you've heard it, uh, all in favor of the motion as presented?
Yes, yes.
Uh, Mayor, I was going to ask if, uh, if, if Mr. Williams would propose to Mr. Via, he will accept an amendment to his motion, which he's read.
I already made a motion on what I did.
So he will not accept it?
Seconded, we had the discussion, it's up for vote.
It's up to somebody doing amendments to vote on, but that's.
That's fine.
I'll, I'll, I will do that after, I will do that this week and, and, and we may, we get it on the agenda for next time.
No, we can amend it now, is what you're saying.
That's fine.
He hasn't made an amendment, I'm not sure, for clarity. Unless you want to make an amendment to this motion, which is on the table.
I, I, I will make an amendment, but what does that, what does that mean about his original motion?
If the amendment passes, then it is part of the original motion.
Part of or replaces?
No, 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 it's part, that, that motion is amended to whatever you get, if you get passed.
If you want to amend it, then you can make a motion and get a double.
No, the amendment comes before the final decision.
That's correct, and, and that's why I was going to ask if Mr. Via wanted to accept the amendment. So if you would, if you proposed to change.
Okay.
Change the motion and Mr. Via, if he accepted it, then that would be the motion.
And I already said that I made the motion.
So I can't, I can't, I can't bring an amendment forward.
He said I made a motion.
So he says no to the amendment, so you.
Make it later.
Yeah, no, I'm going to, I'm going to.
The amendment comes before we finalize the original motion.
Yes, so I, I would like to propose an amendment to your motion, uh, Councilman, uh, Via. That we budgeted four percent of total labor for merit increase. To be based on individual performance evaluations that can range from one to five percent. Uh, based on, based on the score on your evaluation.
Okay, is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
Okay, discussion on the amendment.
So we're going to have two votes?
Yes, sir. No discussion?
But doesn't Johnny, doesn't Councilor Via have to accept the amendment?
I don't think so.
No.
I don't have to.
He, 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 uh, Mr. Vella, he, uh, Mr. Via rejected, uh, uh, Mr. Williams' proposed motion.
So we're going to vote, we're going to vote on my motion and then we're going to vote on.
That's different than the attorney.
Uh, no, uh, what, what's happening now is, Mr. Via, you've made your motion, uh, which is, uh, follows, you just read the, the caption that was in the, on the agenda. Uh, Mr. Williams proposed to amend your motion, you, you denied his request, so he's now made a motion to amend your motion. And so he's read that motion, his amendment, Mr. Heiser seconded that motion, so we can now vote on the amendment to your motion. If the amendment passes, then the amended motion is what the council will then vote on.
Or you lost me on the last one.
So if, so we will then vote on your proposed amendment first, which is.
If that passes, then what?
Then the amended motion.
Will be voted on.
Will be then voted on by the council again.
Okay, okay.
Could be incorporated into his motion?
It would, yes, it would be the amended motion.
It will end up being incorporated as well. So, all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
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 Against amendments, say aye.
Aye.
Amendment passes, three to two, now we go to the original motion, as amended. How's it read, Mr. Locas? How's, how's it read?
If the, the amended motion would be as Mr. Williams stated in his amendment. So it would be a four percent across, a four percent.
Well, what happens to my motion then? I made a motion to, to accept this, what happens to my motion?
It's been amended.
It's been amended. So, your motion was made, Mr. Williams proposed to amend it, uh, with your consent, you said no. So then he can then, Mayor recognized Mr. Williams to amend your motion. He stated his amendment, the, your motion was amended for the vote of the council, so they amended your motion. So the amended motion would be as basically Mr. Williams, Mr. Williams said. We have to do it this way because once the item is voted on, then we can't go back to it. So we would have to then go, uh, otherwise, the alternative would be Mr. Williams could then.
Well, why, why, why did it have to be amended? When I made the motion and Mr. Tarki seconded and we knew that they weren't going to go with it, so why, why do we have to amend?
Can be amended, John.
Sir?
Because it can be amended.
It, it, it doesn't have to, it may be amended, and so council may amend it.
So, so why do the amendment if they're going to bring it back on, on, on the next one? Just have them deny my motion and be done, instead of having an amendment?
He could have done that, yes, he could have done that.
Williams wished to have it amended to the four percent.
Well, it's still the same thing, you know, it's going to be three to two, so.
That's, that, anyway, any other discussion on amended motion? I don't know if you should read it to us to make sure we know what we're voting on, we've had a little confusion on motions in the past.
Yeah, we got that now. He's taking notes.
Okay, we do have it recorded this one.
All right, well, we look at the minutes next meeting. All in favor of the amended motion? Say aye.
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 Against?
Aye.
What did we vote on before? His amendment?
We're voting on, yeah, we voted on his amendment before, now we're voting on the amended motion that Mr. Via made.
And the amended motion would be, would include a four percent, um, merit rate increase based on, uh.
In other words, in other words, my motion went, don't they, the motion that I originally made?
Pretty much.
It was just clarified, John.
Changed, really, anyway.
No, it was changed, it wasn't clarified, it was changed.
Anyway, I think the amended motion failed, a pass, three to two. Moving on to item fifteen, discuss and consider authorizing the city manager into a contract with BarTech Construction. For a two hundred and fifty-foot horizontal bore of eight-inch waterline on CR four forty-three under existing heritage oak trees in the right-of-way. In relation to the one seventy-three waterline project and the amount not to exceed thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and five dollars. Thank you.
Mayor and council, uh, as you recall, in early fiscal twenty-one, you approved a project to replace a four-inch cross-country waterline. With an eight-inch going up four forty-three and one seventy-three and tying at that intersection. Uh, upon installation of the line, it was discovered that the, addressing the large oak trees that are on four forty-three was not part of the original bid. Uh, as it was spec'd, so we hired an arborist to address the issue to find out if this was significant to do an open bore cut along the edge of those trees within the drip line. It was determined that that would probably be, uh, shall we say catastrophic to the trees. So we looked at the option of boring and we were able to get that price down to thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and five dollars. And that includes connecting the line once it's installed. This would go under the root ball of those trees and lo- likely prevent any damage to the trees. We looked at rerouting the line, that was not feasible, it pretty much has to go right through there.
Can't do away with the trees.
No, we don't want it. We, we did approach the land, the home, the landowner and talked through the different options and this was the one that the landowner preferred as well.
Question on total budget is, is, uh, as you stated, four hundred and twenty-four thousand.
Correct.
We've already spent three hundred and eighteen.
Right, we've encumbered three, about three twenty.
And you leave with this, you leave sixty-seven, will that be spent also?
A portion of it will be for the service lateral extensions that has, had to be done to connect the houses to the new waterline. It was fed from behind the houses, it's now fed out by the street, so service laterals had to be run to each house. There will be a small adjustment for that, but nowhere near the remaining budget.
So my point of question is, we have enough money left within what we haven't spent to do the thirty-seven thousand?
Yes, sir, this project will come in under budget.
Okay.
Why, why is it every time that we approve? Some work to be done? I don't know who, who, who does the engineering, figuring out what we need. But it seems like every time that we approve a certain project, they're always coming back wanting. Forty thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars, why isn't everything? Don't we have professionals out there engineering or figuring out what we need? We always have to come back and spend more money?
I agree, it's frustrating, I can't speak to why the oversight on this one, perhaps it wasn't noticed, but.
And just because the money's there doesn't mean that we have to spend it. My point is, that we get a project, we get an estimate, we. My point is, that we get a project, we get an estimate, we get a figure on what the project's gonna cost? And we approve the project and then we have to come back and approve, uh, something that wasn't looked at. Seems like it happens every time.
This was already been adjusted once, right?
Think it has, and this'll be the second time.
Not true?
No, sir, uh, Fourteenth Street had the sewer adjustment.
Oh, we had to adjust the one-seventy-three also once already?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
David, I have a question. Since, some, some of my colleagues are forgetting. Since some of my colleagues wanna save money, do we have to spend this? I'm just kidding, David.
Alright, y'all have heard the item, do we have a motion?
I move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Against?
Aye.
That was an infirmity vote?
Is that for or against?
Is that an infirmity vote, Mr. Vella?
Four.
He said. Passes five zero.
Thank you, David.
Going into executive session at, uh, eight fourteen?